See that young lady right there, and you have thirty full seconds, then we'll start the meeting. If you're all signed up, we're ready to go. County Commission meeting to order for March twentieth. Commissioner McElwain, would you lead us some prayer?
Be with our families as we're away. Be with those going through sickness and peril. Be with everyone as they go home, watching out over his language, amen.
Amen. Everyone stand for the pledge.
By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, sir. Mr. Simkins.
Here.
Mr. Ledger.
Here.
Mr. McElwain.
Here.
Mr. Beatty.
Here.
Mr. Dawson.
Here.
Ms. Spicer.
Here.
Mr. Buckner.
Here.
Mr. Britt.
Here.
Mr. Petty.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Grove.
Here.
Ms. Gray.
Thank you. We do have a chorus. Good to see you all here tonight. First order of business is approval of the minutes of the February two thousand twenty, February twenty first, two thousand twenty-three meeting. Open the floor for motion by Commissioner Buckner, second by Commissioner McElwain. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of voting stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Item number two, committee reports. Commissioner Simkins.
Um, as, as well know, there were several of us at the meeting, our ad hoc committee meeting on our animal control. This is something that's really dear to many people's hearts. We don't wanna, we don't want to speed this thing up by no means. We want to take our time with it. And so we've got a proposal that we want to give to the Animal Society. Commissioner Petty is gonna do that for us in the next two weeks. We've chosen to come back here in two weeks on April the third at six thirty with a decision maybe. If not, we'll work on it some more.
Sorry. Any questions for Commissioner Simkins? Hearing none. Thank you. Are there any other committees to report? Hearing none. The first item of business is a public hearing, rezoning request for Bryce Glenn and Nadine Guthrie, tax map ninety, parcel three point oh oh, ninety-five point five eight acres, sixteen fifty-one Yellow Creek Road, Dixon, Tennessee, A one agriculture to C two commercial, third district. We have eight people wishing to speak on this tonight. I've taken these cards. I'd ask you to come up front. We'll allow two minutes for everyone to speak. If you'll come to the podium and state your name as I call you out. Apologize on this first one. Is it Mr. Bryce Galen? Do you mind coming up forward and take your two minutes?
Hi, how's everyone doing? I'm Bryce, and I'm the person that's put forward this motion to rezone property and build some cabins. I have some material here to circulate to the commissioners, which I'll pass it out afterwards. I don't want to take up too much time, but I'm entrepreneur from Oak Ridge, Tennessee originally, and I'd like to build some cabins in the Nashville area. I've fallen in love with Dixon as a great town and a great place for it. And I found a nice site on Yellow Creek Road. So when I talked to the planning director about how to do this, he said you'll need to get it rezoned commercial. So I've been going through the process to try to do that. And yeah, I'm excited and hopeful that it can be a nice addition to the community here in Dixon. I've reached out to folks, you know, going through the process. We had a split vote in Planning Commission last month. And so I went to the Rotary Club meeting and I went to downtown Dixon and talked to people about what it would bring to the community and people were supportive and said it'd be a really nice thing. We're gonna have an event pavilion that will allow groups to get together and you know, enjoy the area. And that's about it. So it's ten cabins around a lake, six hundred square feet per cabin, two bed, one bath units, and it'll be tastefully developed. If you're curious about it, you can go to orangeblossomlake.com. I'm a fiddle player. So I've Orange Blossom special idea is to try to be able to do some music out there and Orange Blossom Lake seemed like a good name. So that is about the project and I'm eager, I don't know if people are here for that or other things, but I'm eager to hear what people think about it. And I'm hopeful that we're able to figure out a way to get something developed and give a nice amenity to the community. So, thank you.
Thank you. I did get a solid order. Mr. Darnell, do you have a presentation you need to make on this before we go any further?
Thank you, Mayor. The biggest thing, you were given a packet two weeks ago, which had most of the information that Mr. Galen had talked about. They do have to rezone it to a C two zone in order to put cabins as a tourist court. That's all relatively old term that was used a long time ago, especially when there are no interstates for people that were traveling to have a place to stay overnight. It is located on Yellow Creek Road, which is a state highway. And the location is also in the proposed county's growth area. This request did go before the Planning Commission at the February ninth meeting. That night, there was only eight members present. It was a four-four split vote. All the commissioners did like the idea, but there was some that were concerned that they didn't really want to rezone that much land at one time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Darnell?
Yes.
A C one, what does that curtail? I mean, what, what other things could?
It does not allow something as cabins overnight. So there's different, whether you're C one, it's for some commercial, but not exactly everything. As this would take our C two qualification.
Thank you. Any other question, Mr. Darnell?
Mr. Darnell, if we decide to either approve or disapprove this tonight, do we have the ability to approve a certain amount, whole thing? Or if we turn it down, will it all be turned down? Or can we say?
Strictly up to you. That's why it comes to the county commission, no matter what, whether it's approved or disapproved.
I guess what I'm saying, could we decide to prove like three acres of it and disprove the rest of it and keep it rural? Does it all have to be?
Based on the shape of it to do at least five or more, because you gotta have room to have access where they want it. If you'll see in your packet, it's gonna be in the back of the property and they gotta have access to get there. It needs to be something big enough that they could do that.
Yeah, let me, let me interject here. You're, you're acting on the application that was filed. And so the application, I believe, is for the entire tract. And so I think if there was a desire here to rezone part of it, not, but not all of it, I don't think it's appropriate at this time for this body to vote in that way. It's something that would have to go back through the Planning Commission and then come back on whatever recommendation that body had.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Darnell? Thank you, Mr. Darnell. We'll go back to the public hearing portion. At this time, the first name I have, the next name I have available on this is Mr. Mike Henry. He'll come forward. Just remind everybody, we'll have two minutes on each of these. If you want to hang on, let's, well, you'd have their full attention. Thank you, Mr. Henry. You're two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. La. Thank you for the county commission. I'm Mike Henry. I live on Walnut Grove Road. My farm is within sight of the property. It's not adjacent to it. My daughter lives closer to the property and my son lives closer than my daughter. So it would affect not only me, but both of my children's properties. We have farms, all three of us. We are opposed to rezoning to C two. The issues that I have, I'm afraid it would affect my property values and my rural lifestyle along with my farming operation. People from outside do not seem to respect property lines, agriculture fences, and agriculture methods. We've got about a half a mile of Yellow Creek that runs through our properties. I'm constantly having to contact the sheriff's office now for that area being abused. People driving four-wheelers, Jeeps, camping and being there and just using it as if it was a state park. They'll tell me I don't own the creek. My deed says I own to the center of the creek and the Franklin's on the other side of the creek. I've been threatened and the sheriff's department has asked me in no certain situations to let him deal with it. And I've had to call them several times and I appreciate him and his staff coming down and taking care of that. They come in, they cut trees, they build fires, and they do what they want to do. Now, this property is being proposed. I'm against it being rezoned to commercial. I'm against Airbnbs and cabins being put on this property. They're not just going to use that property. They're going to cross the fences. They're going to come on to other places, taking pictures of deer, taking pictures of turkey, fishing and whatnot. I don't think this is suitable for residential and agriculture area. Based upon the experiences that I've already having, I think it'll increase the problem for all of us in this area.
Mr. Henry, got you two minutes. Thank you, my friend. Appreciate that. Next up, Mr. Nelson Pierce.
Members of the county commission, thank you. As Bob said, my name is Nelson Pierce. Like Mike, I too live on Yellow Creek, lived there my whole life. I, I live about as crow flies, probably half a mile from this property that's being considered to be rezoned tonight. I oppose it being approved for a number of reasons. I've said I've lived on Yellow Creek all my life. Number one is we're an agricultural area. And just in general, we don't want any spot commercial zoning in our area, especially a large tract of land like this. Because, you know, with what's happened, we all know that once it's on commercial, the doors open down the road for it to become anything. Then everybody in this room knows probably what I'm referring to there. You know, it could become a ninety-five points, something six acre, anything. Once it's its own commercial, we don't want that. You know, I, I don't, I don't know this guy. He's probably a good guy. But one thing I don't know is he doesn't live in our area. So the impact of this rezoning is not gonna affect him and his way of life like us, the ones that live there, like the problems with the creek Mike spoke of. I have the same problems. You don't own the creek. Well, half the time, they're not anybody that's even from around there. And that's what you have to deal with. We like our quiet, laid back agricultural area. It don't want to have to deal with the increase in traffic, the noise that would come with this development or could potentially come with this development. We're not willing to take that chance if we don't have to. I mean, you're on, hear and see on the news all the time, Airbnb places having to be raided by police and shut down for loud parties. Who's gonna patrol that? You know, who's gonna, who's gonna control that? Rezoning proposal does not benefit any of us who live around there. You know, and I, I read where had community support from all the neighbors of all the people that I know in here, and not one person was contacted by anybody.
Mr. Pierce, thank you. I'm sorry to rush you. They got you two minutes in. We appreciate you coming forward. Next name I have is Mr. Raymond Dodson. I'll just wave my hand about that two minute.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I have very similar, I, I live next to this property. And again, what Nelson said, the vague response, the email, I've never been contacted other than an email that I couldn't read. C two can be any number of things. Y'all probably know better than I. I'm fearful of a market or a beer joint or whatever. Another concern I have is it's a half a mile off the road and there's campfires or a campfire. The area is completely wooded. And I'd hate to see another Gatlinburg. Music venues are also mentioned. I can hear music now from a belt down the road that goes on several hours into the night. So that's about all I can say.
Thank you, Mr. Dodson. Next name I have is Mr. Randy Franklin.
Well, actually, I am a property owner that connects in the back pretty close to where it's at. And so I, I have been, Mr. Bryce emailed me or texted me and then I traced down his number because I don't like to do that. I like to hear people. I'd like to meet him, but we did not have that pleasure, but I did get to talk with him. And I told him my greatest concern was that that area back there is hunted very heavily. And known to, 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 you know, to have a real popular place by the people on the left of that and into the center of that and into our property. And so three different owners, and I know it's hunted very heavily. And I know also that my own children hunt that area back there. And so, and they've walked up on people on our property constantly. And, you know, you hope that nothing like that would ever happen, but it could be very, very dangerous in that sense of the matter. And as Mike said, we have had quite a bit of problems there at the creek in that area where people just come in. And a lot of times when they're there, they just, you know, they're there to have a good time and it trinkles over into other areas. And it was so far back. And it was so far back and that, and I understand, you know, they want to get away and and everything's getting popu- popular all through even to the, to the east side of Dixon County. And it's just gradually working its way all the way through. But I grew up there all my life and, you know, it's just a peaceful place where we can get away. And, and I understand they're wanting to get away. But to see that many people come in all at once and then see that road frontage goes to whatever. And you know, that's going to happen eventually. Something's going to happen because it's already there.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Next name I have is Mr. Gus Guy.
Hi, folks. Gus Guy and my wife, we have a barn about a half mile away from this. All part of that big community down there. Everybody's touched on the ag side of it. On the, you know, sporting end of it and everything. My bigger concerns get into traffic issues. It's just not the most simplest road to navigate, especially at night, especially if you're not familiar with it. On top of that, start looking at the utility and the, where's water supply coming from? More people go in, water up in there. Still start cutting in there by downstream on that. So where's the cost effective going to be picked up there? It's going to become a taxpayer problem. Some of others on that, you know, I use public speaking, so. Just kind of concerned like everybody else, what kind of clientele is going to come in out of this place? They do run rampant trespassing and everything else. We deal with the same thing. Just not a really good thing to have a bunch of out of town city folk coming into an area they've never experienced. There'd probably be people who've never seen a cow before. They just don't know. And they come into it, disrupts the neighborhood the way it is. We like the peace and quiet. We don't like the traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guy. Next name I have is Mr. Mike Clarkes.
Thank y'all for letting me have a little talk here. I own the land on the east side of this, not near the whole side. I own a hundred acres. I own 96 acres. So I have problems or did have problems with the people that owned it before hunting on me. I mean, there wouldn't be any time you couldn't go down there and it'd be, you'd be somebody over there. Hey, will you? Oh, I got permission. Yeah, okay. Well, anyway, that, you know, and I don't want it zoned like that. Who knows what it'll be? I mean, it just opened up 10 worms. And my son, he hunts down there. We have two friends, Art, we let hunt down there. These other people spoke about it. You know, people coming out of Nashville or wherever they come from, they, they don't know about people shooting guns and themselves carrying guns, the way, the way they do in Nashville. They go to those, they throw big parties and all that stuff. But I just, at first off, never was contacted at all. Not a call, not a text, not a how you doing? I'm doing this, not anything. Found out about it through a friend calling me. Little oldie design down there. Lucky they could call you and that day, they, we, we, we proposed them to do this. Well, good luck. Thank y'all. That's about all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Clarkes. Final name I have is Mr. Michael Adams.
Well, I'm last and I'll be the most brief. Michael Adams, I'm at 2999 Yellow Creek Road. My mother is at 1830 Yellow Creek Road, which is really close to my neighbors, which I grew up with. I would like to echo most all of their concerns. For me personally, the biggest issue is this is not approval of a site plan. This is rezoning of a piece of property to a very broad spectrum of usage. I'm sure that the developer's intentions are sincere. However, once this property is rezoned to that C2, he could abandon the project, sell it to someone else and anything's allowable in that C2 zoning can occur. So I strongly object to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. That is closed for a public hearing. Next time a business, a first item of resolutions, it's a budget amendment, all school funds. Dr. Weeks is not available tonight. He sent somebody that probably does all the work. Is any questions on the budget amendments Dr. Weeks sent you? Stand up and let them see you. They don't know who you are back there. There you go. We appreciate having you here tonight. Any questions? Hearing none, open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Petty, second by Commissioner Ledger. Hearing no discussion, all in favor of voting stating aye, opposed, thank you. Item number two, budget amendments, all funds except schools, Mr. Hall. You do know Mr. Hall. Is there any question for Mr. Hall on what he presented to you two weeks ago? Open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner McElwain, second by Commissioner Williams. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of voting stating aye, opposed, thank you. Item number three, judicial commissioner and highway handbook revisions. That's how it is written on the agenda, but we do have to separate those. So the first one, we will do the resolution to adopt a policy procedure manual for judicial commissioners. Ms. Lizzy Shelton, our general sessions court clerk is in the back. If you have any questions, should be, feel free to ask those. Open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Simpkins, second by Commissioner Britt. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of voting stating aye, opposed, thank you. Next resolution of resolution acknowledging and approving adoption of employee handbook by county highway department. Mr. Hodges is here, not with the highway department. This is basically on theirs. You recall that brings them under regular county handbook. That's all he changed in there. They're like the rest of us now. Open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Spicer, second by Commissioner Gray. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of voting stating aye, opposed, thank you. Item number four is health department grant. Resolution authorized county accept grant through the Tennessee Department of Health to fund a local health capital investment project. This is the one where we're matching with the federal money received to get a new health department built. Our match is $1,047,900 to get the 5.4 million dollar grant. Mr. Reagan was reviewing the contract on that. He has found that acceptable for us to sign. Any questions for myself or Mr. Reagan? Open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner McElwain, second by Commissioner Williams. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of voting stating aye, opposed, thank you. Item number five is resolution authorized Dixon County to apply for and accept a grant through the Tennessee Department of Finance Administration to be used for violent crime intervention. Sheriff Eads is here tonight. If you have any questions for him, I think the best thing that's in here is it's a 100% grant. That usually answers everybody's question. Open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Petty, second by Commissioner Buckner. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of voting stating aye, opposed, thank you. Before we go to item number six. So got a lot of folks here that may not be here usually. What you see is we're moving very fast. We had a work session two weeks ago where each of these items were discussed in detail. So sometimes it looks like we're moving fast, but we present these two weeks ahead of time where we go over in detail what we're doing. It gives the commissioners time to ask questions of myself, the attorney, or any department head to help further explain it. So don't be alarmed. We've actually have looked at this and know what we're doing. So. But I saved that for the next one. Item number six is from the public hearing earlier, a resolution to amend the official zoning map of Dixon County, Tennessee is adopted in Article Five, Section 5.020 of the zoning resolution of Dixon County, Tennessee by rezoning 6.39 acre lot identified as parcel 18.00 of tax map 086 from A1 agriculture to C1 commercial. Open the floor, we'll just, excuse me? I see the acres got smaller. Does anybody have the right one then? This is the last one? Oh, thank you. This was not on the public hearing. I'm sorry. After I gave a nice class on what county government does, I don't know what I'm doing. I'm sorry, that had nothing to do with the earlier public hearing. That's going to be next. So this had to do with the public hearing and the meeting we had last month. Now that I've been corrected, do I have a motion of second? Thank you. Commissioner Williams, you're going to make the second on this, behind Commissioner Groves, just because you called me out. I heard, any question, discussion on that? This is storage buildings on Sylvia Road. Any question, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of voting stating aye, opposed, thank you. Now, that speech I made a minute ago, let's try it on this one. Rezoning request for Bryce Glenn and Nadine Guthrie, tax map 990, parcel 3.00, 95.5 acres, 1651 Yellow Creek Road, Dixon, Tennessee, A1 agriculture to C2 commercial, third district. Open the floor. We'll start with some discussion before we move on to a motion. Any questions, discussion, anybody like to have on that? Mr. Darnell is available for planning zoning questions. Mr. Reagan's here for legal questions.
I, I would, if I had to make a motion or not, which I will make a motion, it's going to be to deny it on the whole 95 acres. I believe when we open the whole 95 acres, this opens it up everything to a lot of things. I'm not a disencouraging you to come back at a later time with just the land as proposed. I believe this is America. And I understand everybody's concerns, but at this time, my motion would be when it comes to motion time to be denied because the whole 95 acres is included.
Thank you. Your pro- motion is proper. So at this point, we do have a proper motion for denial. And I'll open for a second. Commissioner McElwain makes a second. Now we'll go back to discussion. Any questions or discussion on this item? Any questions or discussion?
I have a question for Mr. Darnell. In the planning and zoning meeting, they did offer him another option if he was willing to do that. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other question for Mr. Darnell, Mr. Reagan? Hearing no discussion, there's a proper motion of second. The motion is to deny the rezoning request. I'll remind you at this point, a yes vote is to deny, a no vote is not to accept that motion. So if you understand that again, a yes is to deny, but no is not to. Any other discussion or questions? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Yes.
Mr. Ledger?
Yes.
Mr. McElwain?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Ms. Spicer? Mr. Buckner? Mr. Britt?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Mr. Williams? Mr. Grove? Ms. Grove?
Rezoning to this request is denied. Next time the business approval notice, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Jason Bragg, Chris Burgess, Stuart Cassidy, Christie Cordero, Him Crow, Destiny Curry, Dorothy Deets, Jamie Dooley, Jacqueline Totti, Andrea Hall, Lisa Holly, Michaela Hollis, Anitha Holt, Leanne Keaton, Carrie Martinez, Carob Northfleet, Chloe Osborne, Andrea Petty, Michael Petty, Margaret Rinstra, Amanda Sankar, Karen Citrus, Anna Claire Shepherd, Michael Shepherd, Michael Spears, Trina Springer, Diana Taylor, Mackenzie Vault and Chelsea Williams.
Motion by Commissioner Dawson to accept, second by Commissioner Simpkins. All in favor of voting stating aye, opposed, thank you. No voters are approved. Any announcements from any commissioners? And I did kind of skip one. We did have some other, was there any other, other business? I'm going to tickle myself. I'm going to get them introduced here, but I was, no fish fries, nothing going on. Thank you.
April 1st, we're going to be dedicating fields up at the park. One of them is Mark Whitaker, Lori writes our checks, late husband.
I missed part of it. I'm sorry, Commissioner Grove.
I said April 1st, we're going to be dedicating some fields, three fields at our new park. One of them would be Lori Whitaker, Mark.
Mark, yeah.
After her dedicating, because we sold the park in Burns and going to rename a field up there after Mark. Kyle Fuquay's son, Braxton, and which is the Chandler family and Fuquay's family and the Cantrell, Kayla Cantrell, which is the Langfords. And so everybody's welcome at 9:30. Have a little ceremony, April 1st at the ballpark.
Thank you. Those are names we all know, especially my family, the Cantrells. And of course Lori Whitaker, who's worked for Dixon County Government 42 years. That is Mark, her husband, who's died some years ago. And it's nice, those will be rededicated. So thank you, Commissioner Grove. Any other announcements? I'll knock these, nobody has a birthday they want to report? Yes, Commissioner Spicer.
BBQ April the 15th.
Your microphone's on.
I'm sorry. Porter Community Center is having their barbecue April the 15th.
Fantastic. Good. Thank you. Any others? Out here tonight, we have a smarter looking crowd than normal, then not only to mention the folks that showed up on the public hearing. But you may notice a few folks here from leadership Dixon County. I was able to spend a last Wednesday with them. They know state government inside and out now, so they're going to be available for an answer to any question you may have about state government. So if y'all would, why don't y'all stand up and give a wave, let everybody see who you are. There you go. Thanks for being here. If there are no other announcements, any others, I'll make the final one then. The next regular session meeting will be on Monday, April 17th, 2023 at 7 PM in the Beaverdale Booty Reed Junior County Commission Chamber, the Dixon County Administration Building, Four Court Square, South Tennessee. Have a motion, second or like?